This is an important step in the budget process, especially for board members. Our staff has been working hard on developing the budget and this will give us an opportunity to see where we are, ask the questions, and provide input. At this point, I will turn things over to the superintendent, but I have to say one Don and I have been on the board for six years, and at the beginning of COVID, the county was going to give us five million, and then they asked if we could take some time and if we could take the five million off the table. We eventually got one million of that, but please, send us the other four million back and put us in a better position. Thank you. Ms. McCabe?
Welcome everyone to our budget session. I want to thank everyone for being here this afternoon. We have Commissioner Rothstein with us. Thank you for being with us for this important meeting. This is the beginning of our FY24 operating budget process. Typically, we would have had this first work session earlier in the month. This year, with the election timelines and the transition to understanding the new state blueprint formula and restrictions and the impact locally, we are a bit later in the year. However, we did begin some of the themes at the delegation meeting at the end of November, so we do have a starting point. At the January board meeting, I need to present you with my proposed FY24 operating budget. From there, you will have discussion and dialogue, as well as a period of public feedback, including a public budget hearing. And then you will adopt your FY24 budget request, you will submit it to the county. For this afternoon's work session, our objectives are to present projected revenues and preliminary expenditures, to discuss priorities and requests, both those I have determined to include in my proposed budget and others that I did not include, to note that the blueprint concerns we presented at the delegation meeting remain looming on our horizon, to briefly review your fund balance and some planned uses in FY24, and to have general discussion and Q and A on today's presentation and the next parts of the process. I would propose that I ask Mr. Burke to proceed with the presentation of the overview and the figures. Along with Mr. Shachne and Mr. O'Neal, I may interject at various points to highlight some items and provide background information, and we will be happy to respond to any questions and comments you have throughout the presentation. Mr. Burke?
Good afternoon. Board members, superintendent, Commissioner Rothstein. As mentioned, I'll be walking us through a presentation that's meant to be a summary, an overview of where we are. If at any time we want to get into more detail, certainly ask, we can delve into that. We've got staff on hand to be able to get more background and more detail. As you know, this is my first time through the budget process from the beginning. I kind of came in at the tail end last year, so I'm continuing to learn as we go through and appreciate your patience. And as I said, if we kind of get into some background, some context, I might need some help and others will chime in there. All right, good. So let's jump right in. Going to give some overview of our revenue picture as we come into a new year. We're focusing on the non-restricted operating budget, what we generally think of as just our operating budget. We are continuing to learn and implement and transition into the blueprint for Maryland's future. This has us seeing some new revenue streams that come through with that, as well as some revenue streams that we had in the past that are ending. So a lot of moving pieces, as you know, and we're still learning, figuring that out. We have not yet received official numbers from the state. So at this point, you know, we're going to be looking at an estimate. Another variable in it is our enrollment. With our September 30th recent enrollment, we saw a increase in total full-time students, about 717, pushes this up over 25,300 and some. So a revenue increase that comes along with the student enrollment portion of the formula. So with those two pieces, we estimate our state revenue to be an increase of about 11 and a half million, a 7.8% increase or so. That is, as I say, very preliminary, and we'll look forward to getting more information on that as we get closer to the governor releasing his budget and the state legislative On our local revenue outlook, the county's adopted operating plan from last year would have our system receiving a $6.7 million increase in ongoing revenues. You'll recall that last year, there was a $2 million component of one-time money, so it was sort of 4.7 of it is sort of total growth. Add in the ongoing nature of the additional 2 million, and we would see in our budget, for budget terms, a $6.7 million ongoing revenue increase. We'll be walking through our identified needs and where we stand, but where we are at this time, sort of give the end result here, we'll be looking for an additional request to the county of about $6.7 million to support the identified needs as we'll go through tonight. That would be an additional ongoing and would put the total county request at 13.4 million increase in ongoing revenue. That represents about 6.3% of our prior year. So what's driving that is the identified needs that we've gotten from many different sources, a lot of moving pieces here as we've put together the budget. Certainly, as all businesses are feeling, the inflationary impacts of our operations is a significant component this year, our utilities and fuel costs, our employee benefits, other insurances, and additional operating needs of the system. So simply carrying out the existing functions is seeing significant cost impact from inflation. We'll get into sort of the dollars of this later, just wanted to kind of walk through what some of the items out there are. Certainly, blueprint continues to be a driver of some of the costs in this year and future years as we implement the school system-funded dual enrollment program, as well as begin to cover the costs of AP exams. We've got the career counseling component, the workforce development component that will be going in as well. TSI is a program that prior had restricted funding and is now rolling back into our operating fund. And then we are looking at the final five classrooms of pre-K full day. That includes some FTE, full-time equivalents as well. Anytime, sure.
I do have a question. Where it's state security there, it's staffing, is that Brian's position? Because I think it's very important.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was because school security is very important. Okay, thank you.
Yep, we'll get in there.
Hey, Rob. The 13.4, is that 6.7 for the blueprint, or is it 6.7 for stuff and the blueprint?
I'd say in total, so I'm identifying lots of various needs. The 13.4 was, as I mentioned, 6.7, it looks like it's planned, that's an additional 6.7 on top of that. Blueprint is a big driver, but I'm referencing a number of drivers here. Certainly, blueprint is a big piece.
So these drivers are not blueprint-driven drivers? Some are, some aren't?
Some are, some aren't.
Are we able to break out which ones are and which ones aren't? Where we know these are the must-dos and these are the should-dos and these are the want-to-do's? That'll... I mean, and I'm not asking you, but I think it's a way to look at this in prioritizing the list. These are the things we must accomplish, therefore, funding must have to happen. These are things we really want to happen, and these are things that we really should happen for our community. And again, I'm asking openly to all of us, as this is a work session, because it's going to be difficult, so we all know that.
I would say that I don't think... I think we're going to really struggle if we don't have what is on that list of preliminary expenditures, just to keep us going in the way that we've been functioning and start to tiptoe toward some of the blueprint mandates. I don't see anything on there that we're not already currently doing, or that we don't think we have to do in order to keep our schools running. For instance, substitute rates. We, because our fill rates are so low right now, we feel like we need to do something, also in comparing our substitute rates to districts around us, we feel like we have to do something to make sure that our classrooms are covered and safe, as well as places for our students to be able to learn when our teachers are out. So when we put this together, as you can imagine, we had a lot of things that we really need to do, but the things that made this list of preliminary expenditures are the things that we felt we're going to struggle to function next year without these.
Let me just follow up just one on this is, makes perfect sense. Then with that said, prioritizing what we plan on tiptoeing through, you know, and where we want to actually need to put our full foot forward. Because, you know, when you're talking about resources, time, people, money, whether you tiptoe, or you put your full foot forward, makes a big difference. And sometimes, if you don't do it the right way, it's going to cost double the following years. So you either got to do it right, or you got to say, okay, we're just going to go in the shallow end and, you know, those are the type of things I think us working together will understand, and especially for the community, hey, we want this community to have the best education as it always has, and in moving forward with this blueprint, here's the things that we're going to put a full foot forward, so I apologize.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that Ms. McCabe has already, I think, met with Mr. Seleski, I think, at least four times already to try to send a message, get the groundwork so everyone understands. But we did not ever have blueprint dual enrollment, and that's probably a million?
We're estimating.
Yes, so these things here are things that we are being told to do, and we have had the two custodians on that list for career and tech since we have a larger building. They're not extras, they're just that we can't, one person can't get by there cleaning that whole big tech center now. So all of this stuff is pretty much necessary, and we do not have any fluff. There is no such thing as fluff here at the Board of Education, if you look at that. So, you know, when I ask about security, the man in the back there is, has been the Lone Ranger, so we get Brian to help him, but the way things are in society today and the way things are happening so fast at schools, he does need an assistant. So, and that's been there. So a lot of this is not any fluff, any extras, it's things that we have been working on the last three or four years of people, positions, that, you know, we need, and we've been doing it as a priority, and especially things have changed with a little bit of COVID, and we need definitely psychologists. Technology has been at the bottom. We've cut that, cut that, cut that, and technology has really changed, and the security of technology has changed. So there's no fluff, and I am telling you, we probably need everything on that list. Ms. Savigny?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to reiterate a couple of things that you just said as well, especially with regard to the seven fund balance positions, because those are things where we had identified during the pandemic that like, okay, we just can't wait for these positions anymore. We have to put them in, and we have to deal with the structural imbalance that that's creating, right? That we're using one-time funds to pay for those because we knew we had to have those in place, we just couldn't wait any longer. And the need for all of these positions, like, so the easing of the pandemic has not impacted our need for any of these positions. So we're, we did try to get ongoing funding from the county the last two years, right? Like, when we didn't get the increase that we needed the year of the pandemic and we had to go MOE, that put an additional strain, and we've been trying to get the ongoing funds back from that missed year to help with these positions. Now, we got the one-time funds last year, and we greatly appreciate those, we're certainly not going to balk at that in any way, but at this point, we need it to be ongoing in order to permanently fund these positions because they're needed for the performance of the school system.
And I would just add to that, that even adding these positions, we're really nowhere near, we're still on a shoestring with these positions from where we really should be, you know? And I'll give you, for instance, you know, the four technology positions, you know, we're in a situation now where all of our students have laptops, they have, you know, it's a one-to-one, one student per every laptop. In most other districts, there's a technology person in every school who can help teachers and help students to utilize that technology. And when things happen, as we all know, happens with technology, there's someone there to help out with that. You know, we're running, we're asking for this four, which we've been running with, and a couple of others that we've had on staff, and then we've put that responsibility on other people in the school. And so, you know, I don't want anyone to think that if we do these things, we're going to be up to par with our neighbors. That's not what we're saying. We're saying in order to even function the way that we've been functioning, we would need these positions.
Dr. Dorsey?
And I agree with what's being said, and I think the analogy, when you heard tiptoeing forward, maybe you had the impression that these are items that really aren't needed, you know, because with what you said about sort of categorizing the priorities, well, this is like the bare-bones, you know, sort of necessity that we need, and some of these items, we've just repeated over and over and over again, and again, we do need to have those. And I'm sure, you know, we could go around the room and come up with other items that we'd like to have on the expenditure list as well, but this is just a small way of moving forward, is the way I'm seeing it. That's how I looked at the tiptoeing, so to speak.
No, I get you, and no, in no way am sharing that this is any fluff whatsoever. It's not a word I use. And, yeah, understanding that this is, I won't say the bare bones, but what is necessary is important. It would be interesting to know what is not as, I won't say not as necessary, but like you said, is what are the other goals that you have and objectives above and beyond these preliminary expenditures that, you know, it goes super ego, if we had the world today, you know, as an Oyster, what would we do it with it? Yeah, I am in no...
We have that.
No, that's great, and I'm in no...
You would like that at any time.
Absolutely, because I'm in no position whatsoever to say no, or am I in no position whatsoever to say that this is not necessary. That's not our role, what's, you know, at all. You know, just the way it was described, and it's probably because Rob just did a very poor job at doing it, but no, what was described is that I was understanding that it was a laundry list of not, these are the must-haves, so, and Rob did a great job in describing this.
And there's one other thing that nobody's even said anything about, but if you look at staffing, and at the very end, there's a comma, and it says 12-month ADs. MPSAA came out and have changed some rules and timelines and practice times, and the Board of Education's going to have to make a decision whether they're going to be 11-month or 12-month because of the time changes, the date changes for practices and things. So that was a new one that just popped up last week, I think, but I wanted to mention that because I don't know if everybody knew in the room that that was a possibility of happening, but yes, they changed the rules, and now different start times for football practice and spring and fall practices, so I just wanted to make that. Yes?
Just to elaborate a little bit more on that, Ms. Burke, there'll be organized team activities taking place after Memorial Day, roughly in the month of June.
Mr. King, correct.
If I'm wrong in saying that, but every sports team will have the ability to have organized team activities. And right now, the athletic directors, to be up there 11-month currently, and they use that time for the spring season that runs late, and then that fall season, which starts very early in August. So in order to have, you know, a very smooth, organized and supervised, you know, organized team activity across all athletic sports, so in that month of June, it's not just spring sports, it's all of the sports will have time to come together to do some very controlled practicing. So that's what that's for.
And if we, you know, we talked about this, and if we were to not move forward with 12-month ADs, we would be putting our athletes at a large disadvantage when it comes to looking at the other districts in Maryland having, being able to have those summer activities, training practices for their athletes, and then we're the only one who isn't providing that. I'm sure we would hear a lot of concern from our athletes and our parent community on that.
And we always consider options, so Nick and Cindy, superintendent, and Mr. Shachne looked at what else could we do to comply with this, but it would involve pulling the ADs on different random, or, you know, trying to program in other days they wouldn't work to cover those mandatory days, those days that are now required, but that would be during the fall season, or the fall playoffs, or the winter season, or the, so there's not a lot of great alternatives, other than to recognize, you know, we have to address those days. So you anticipated what else we were going to say on this slide? I think this slide and maybe a couple later are the most important, and it's a good question, there is something coming up, Commissioner, that gets to, and if we could get even more, here's what we would do next. These are the kinds of things that, as we sifted through this with the superintendent, sort of, we felt like, she felt like, this is what we need to kind of just move forward next year. And so we have a couple more pieces of background information we wanted to share anyway when we got here, some of that you've already brought out in your questions and conversations.
John, before we move on, could I just make one other comment to kind of transition to what Commissioner Rothstein was talking about? I think it would be really helpful if we could understand what the glide path is from a budget perspective to Kerwan, to blueprint, because it's kind of a transitional, right? Like, we're not getting all the way there next year, and so I think if we kind of, like, we tend to look at this as more of a one-year look, but I think it would be really helpful for everybody at the table right now to kind of understand, okay, over the next three years, this is how we expect to transition from a budget perspective into full compliance with blueprint.
Is that defined?
Somewhat, and we were staying here for a minute, we weren't about to move on. We were going to try to do some of that and then fill in some of the other gaps that maybe aren't necessarily directly blueprint-related, but also kind of are blueprint-related. So the first bullet that says blueprint mandates are things that are absolutely required in the statute with a due date, the blueprint statute with a due date next year. We can't choose not to do them, even if we don't like them and don't want to do them or don't think that they're good ideas. We're still working hard to figure out exactly how to accomplish them, and we're making some very hard choices. We talked about some of this, we talked about all of this, but some of these things we specifically hit on at the delegation meeting, like dual enrollment, we continue to converse with the college, we've informed them that, you know, we have cost estimates, we assume that those will grow, we know that those will grow, but until there's more uncertainty, superintendent's in a tough position. So one of the things we're planning, in addition to acknowledging the cost, is at least for next year, pulling back from where we deliver some of the dual enrollment courses with our teachers in our schools. And you can, and people will argue, that's not great for kids, but until there's more certainty about this and what the cost structure will be and how this will look like, that's, you know, that's an uncomfortable decision that superintendent's making for next year. Either way, we're still paying 75% of the tuition, and then next year, and the fees for what we anticipate would be more courses. Career counseling is legislated, that's $62 per student, so we've been working with the $1.6 million figure. The TSI is an intervention program, that's not new, that was one of the, like, the early, the pre-blueprint blueprint law that phased in certain programs, that was sort of administered as a grant, which now becomes permanent, so we've been showing it as restricted money or one-time money, we need it, that already exists in the budget, we just have to show it as permanent ongoing revenue now, so we have to take it from permanent ongoing revenue. Pre-K does not implement what, pre-K continues the program we've been working on of expanding all, I think it finishes, it finishes expanding all of our existing pre-K sites to full-day pre-K from half-day. That does not get to where we should be under the blueprint, and sort of to your question, Ms. Savigny, we're supposed to be on a five-year pathway to a 50-50 partnership with private entities, and I'm going to have to call Steve Wernick back to the podium, but for all families of four-year-olds who want a slot, who are at a certain percentage of the federal poverty level, and then eventually three-year-olds at a different percentage of the poverty level, this doesn't get us anywhere near there, and there's a lot of questions about what the private partnership could look like and what's available there and what the interest is there. But also, there's a space issue here. We really can't expand more than what our physical sites let us expand, so there's a whole lot of tie-ins here, but, and is it three or five, Steve? In a few years, we're supposed to have all of these slots for all of these kids, this takes another small step towards that, but it doesn't get us there.
Correct. It's FY26.
FY26.
So it's really the end of the school year, 24, 25, which is quickly approaching. It slots up to families who are above, up to 300% above the poverty line, the federal poverty line, so we used to use free and reduced meals, and that would be our criteria, now it's actually 300% above that. And most districts are struggling to have private partnerships. I found out even Baltimore County is struggling. I found out even Baltimore County is struggling with very limited private partnerships just because of the cost of the structure of the pre-K program, because you have to have a full-day teacher, a full-day certified, CDA-certified instructional assistant. You have to have what we call, you know, special areas or related arts. They have to include a lunch. And, and those individuals, including the teacher and the, on the CDA-certified assistant, has to be paid at the rate at what the county is paying their, their teachers and instructional assistants. So most private providers aren't able to have that much income available to include all those entities.
Plus, there's a specific curriculum or specific standards that have to be met.
Correct. You have to follow the Maryland State standards, pre-K standards. Absolutely.
So the, not, not on this, but on overall, that, again, going back to that 13.4, it's focused on this preliminary expenditures, the 13.4? The, kind of what was just described, and Ms. Herbert knows well, the cheapest part having a horse is buying a horse. There's a whole lot more to having a horse. And the stabling, the shoeing, the veterinarian, the saddles, the question, it goes on and on. Don't buy horses.
True.
Unfortunately, have those scar tissue experiences. But anyway, with pre-K, you know, the facilities, the, the playgrounds, all that kind of stuff that goes along with pre-K. Is that built into this or is it like the tiered effects?
This is, this is that-
The bare bones?
This is just to expand those existing remaining five half-day sites to full day. This doesn't take, it's, it's sort of a minimal step into-
Yeah.
-what eventually are the blueprint requirements. There's, I don't know if it's easier to go sequentially because we have more background information to provide here, maybe come back to some of those things as we go down. Transportation, normally we might just include that in a bigger number of inflationary impacts, but last year you approved a change to the, to the reimbursement formula, and so that's been a recent topic. And, and it's a big number, so we've, we've singled that out here separate from inflation. And in your packet beyond the public presentation, there's, there are some, a handful of other documents that are backup material. There's a one-pager on transportation and the top, the top part of that one-page document shows, represents that bullet point. So just to move, just to move forward one year with the formula you approved last year, that bears a certain amount of cost. The, the only change we've made to the formula from last year, an ongoing topic was throughout the committee process and, and the discussions you had before you acted, was that there's nothing in the formula that reimburses the contractors for the diesel exhaust fluid additive that, that you have to put in diesel engines for the last several years. So the one change that would be, that would be a tweak to the existing formula is, we toyed with those numbers for a long time, trying to work with them and understand it and do some research. This proposal on the screen and in your budget, or in the Superintendent's budget, would lower the fuel divisor from seven miles per gallon to 6.2, 6.75, so a quarter of a mile difference. That equates to about $120,000 increase. So not the largest amount of the overall increase, but we, we feel like that would be fair compensation for the, for the, for the diesel additive item. And then the formula you approve also phases in the administrative allotment that each, that the contractors get for each bus. You, you had outlined a plan to phase that in by $250 more each year for five years, and you're backing that with your fund balance in the, in, in each successive year. That'll show up later in your fund, in the, in the slides on fund balance. Also on this handout, which appears on a future slide that kind of gets to the Commissioner's question, there are additional things that the contractors have asked for that are not included here. The numbers are on this piece of paper, but that shows up on a future slide as things that didn't make the Superintendent's initial budget, but that are-
Right.
-requests or needs or priorities, demands.
But we did need to do something to keep those buses rolling.
Yes.
And it's not exorbitant, but you can't drive a diesel truck unless you have DEF in it, the new ones. So it's, it's, it's a no-win situation when it comes to that with those, those engines. And I don't think we're going to go to electric because they're three times as much. So, and they'll stop on sale on Bottom Road and not get across.
That's another law and, and another discussion not pictured here.
But there's not a lot of, there's no extra in this either. We just, we want to, you know, they're not make, they're not making, they're not millionaires driving school buses. So I just want everybody to understand that, but-
And, and I would add, as you, as you look at numbers and make hard decisions eventually in the next couple of months, I, I would say we are not without problems. We cover routes every day that, you know, where there was a call-out or somebody's sick, but not as bad as last year.
Yeah.
So this is an area where we've made giant steps in improvement, I think as a result of what you did with the formula. So it's, it's, Mr. Harsh, he's probably knocking on anything wooden, but it's, it's not, it's not back to how it used to be, but unlike some other areas that we're going to talk about around substitute rates, it's much, much better than it, than it has been. So to reverse this or to pause this, you know, operationally, I don't, I don't know that that would be the wisest thing. That's why the Superintendent didn't recommend it. On staffing, Mr. Burke mentioned when he was speaking, you, you approved two additional custodians for Career and Tech for this year. This would be two more, and then that would be it. So we operate on a square footage formula of one custodian per 20,000 square feet of cleaning area. The, the total, the total footprint of the center, of the tech center will go up by about 90,000 square feet when it's all done. The, the Phase One, the, the new addition added about half of that, and so we requested, and you added two more this year. This would finish it for the full project. And so this is, this is an addition, but it's not, it's an addition to maintain the formula. We work hard to try to maintain with our ASME unit on, on their workload. The project manager is, is something that the Superintendent has referenced a couple of times in passing this fall. This would be a construction project manager. This would be a new position. And this ties to a lot of things, including just the reality of where we are right now, our current resources and the blueprint and the future, starting, starting next year. We, and Superintendent's also alluded to all the reductions we made over the last decade. There was a time when I first got here where we had one supervisor and four project managers in the construction office. Two of those positions were removed through attrition during all the years of cuts. So now it's Mr. Marks, and as of December, the end of this month, two project managers. That's where we've really been for the last couple of years. You allowed us to try to get ahead of a pending retirement, and that was, and that was tremendous. But capital has been a place where we have continued to, despite some of the concerns we all had a few years ago as to what could happen in the capital program. The state is coming through left and right. We have the, and the county. We have those, the two major projects that we always talk about, but we have a number of smaller systemic projects, systems renovations, or other kinds of things that we don't often even think about, but require somebody's work, like window replacements and moving relocatable classrooms. All of those things require someone to manage it. We have now exceeded our ability, our human capital ability, to move the capital program forward right now. So Mr. Marks would ask for two, we're asking for one, but this would allow us to continue forward on the, on the capital trajectory, trajectory we're on. This isn't a requirement. We would say, and this, we spent a lot of time with the Superintendent, appreciate her being involved in this and understanding it. The trade-off is, if we don't do this, then we need to really shift back the systemic renovations for a few years, because our folks can't handle, in fairness to them and in, and in professional integrity, I'm going to be standing at that podium trying to explain what went wrong with some projects if we don't increase Mr. Marks's resources. So this would be to keep the two big projects going and all of the things that the state has been participating in, that the county has already funded, plus all the little things that we don't even think about. That's what this would be. The trade-off would be to push some of those things. The risks with that would be inflation and other costs driving up, so you'd be paying more for that project in the longer term anyway. And then you take into account the pre-K requirements of the blueprint. That's not even yet something they're, they're dealing with, so we're looking at that, too. Somebody has to manage those pre-K additions if they're going to come. I think you know a lot about the seven fund balance positions, so we'll, we'll answer questions, but those are, those are there now. These would become permanently funded, and then we talked a lot about the 12-month A.D.s.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment when you were talking about the additional custodians at the Career and Technology Center, and certainly, you know, there is a need for that. But my question is, you know, that square foot formula that's in place, is it pretty much realized now in all of our schools?
It's close. There are swings, and if the ASME folks were here, they would have lots of things to say about it. It's like any staffing formula. It's not pristine. It's not perfect from school to school, but we, we try to get really close to it. We cut 29 custodian FTEs, and then I think nine floaters, two, or seven floaters a few, a few years ago in the, in the decade of things we reduced. And one of the things we did in addition to, so we increased the formula, obviously. You don't cut 29 FTE without changing it from what, I think it went from 18 to 20 at that point. We also split FTE, and that would be one of the many, they, I'm sure the union would say that's bad for our workload, and they would, they would be right. The second thing we did to try to equalize or keep that formula as, as pure as it could be was we split FTE. So now you might be a custodian half of the day in your school and half of the day in Ms. Pataglia's school, and no one likes that, and no one thinks that's a good idea. And, and I understand their complaints and why it's, why it doesn't work great. It's not seamless, but that's a choice we made, and we had, we had to make a lot of choices. We're not special in operations. We made choices like this all over the place. So that's how it's implemented, so it's not implemented perfectly, but, but it's, you know, it's fairly implemented.
Yeah, I just remember with some of the schools with portables, it seems like once those units were added-
Not, yeah, not part of it.
-we didn't get additional custodial help.
And the, and the Career and Tech Center is actually a great example. That's one of the places where the formula is not as equal as it might be in other places. Our theory is those are different kinds of spaces, and the kids, the students do some cleanup, too, in those spaces, so they're a little higher there. Even if you add these, the four over two years, they're still a little bit below the formula there. Substitute rates, that's another thing you have some backup material on. And unlike sort of the successes of the transportation formula moving us forward, we don't talk about it a lot. We would prefer to celebrate our successes and recognize the, the hard work and talents of the folks leading our schools and, and our teachers and, and our assistants and support staff. We still have a, we still have a lot of challenges covering our, our schools every day. It's perhaps not as bad as it was at the height of the pandemic, but every day, as the Superintendent is focused on instruction and, and, and learning recovery and moving instruction forward beyond that, our principals wake up in general with the reality that I have to spend a couple hours starting my school day trying to figure out how every classroom is filled for the, for the rest of the day. And that's a, that's a complex, that's a problem with a lot of different elements and moving parts that we are doing our best to try to figure out. There's many factors involved with that. One of them is vacancies, and so we provided you with just a snapshot in time. These are our vacancies today. For ASME, those are just the custodians, not also the maintenance folks, the centralized maintenance kind of skills trades folks, it's higher if you include them. But then you can see the, the administrative level, the, the case positions, and then various teaching positions. So you have that, then you have work that has to happen every day where, where teachers might have to be participating in a meeting. You have people who get sick or whose kids get sick and they need to take leave. And when you add that all up, we, we still are not back to a place where we're comfortably providing coverage every day where we really need to be. Another part of that would be having enough substitutes. And then sort of the second sets of grass show, just again, a snapshot in time, but I've looked at this enough with Mr. Diaz that it, you could consider it an average. Our coverage rate, or we call it our fill rate of substitutes, is more than 10% below where it was in our better times before the pandemic on any given day. So we don't have the volume of substitutes we need to, we have vacancies, we don't have the volume of substitutes we need. And what schools have to do, the choices they have to make includes having teachers covered during their planning time, pulling the assistant from their job as the assistant to be the teacher for the day, pulling the student support assistant to be the assistant who's being the teacher. And it all compounds, and it's all, it's all a big, there's a lot there. So the Superintendent has, has directed me to bring back to you at your January meeting on her behalf, an action item to restore the add-ons we did for substitute pay rates for the end of last year, but to make that permanent and hope that that's one more factor in closing this gap of school coverage. That's why this is a bullet on this list, because once we bring it back and make it permanent, it becomes ongoing revenue. And that's about 1.2 million? Rob will get to those numbers later. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I have, I was thinking here. So anyway, when you were talking about ASME, now I know, I'm trying to think if we are proactive on this. I know Jim Bean has worked in maintenance forever, over 40-some years. We, we all knew he was retiring, but do we, are we proactive in advertising for an opening or are we just continually advertising all the time for ASME employees?
We advertise all the time.
Okay.
We, we can't fill all the vacancies we have now, so there are schools out there who for two and three years at a time have not had a full custodial staff because they just can't find the people.
And when I've visited some of my schools, they said, they have said that, that they have, you know, but I was just curious how we advertise for that. If there's anything else we could improve on or think out of the box or whatever.
Mr. Diaz has worked with Ms. Gaddis. We, we have a billboard up. As we continue to wrap the facilities vans with the, with the school information, there's a, there will be, as that rolls out, how to apply information or what number to call or what website to go to, to apply for any job on the back of all of our vans. I'm sure our facilities guys will love that. Ernesto's, Mr. Diaz is working with the Workforce Development Board to be part of some job fairs in the new year, and we'll be advertising that out and blasting that out. And we've, we've started to rely on the schools to help us with advertising at their level. You'll see, school marquee signs may say we need student support assistance, newsletters that go out or email, email messaging that goes out to parents at the school level, because sometimes people may see that more than they would see one of the other forms, and, and maybe they want to work at the school where their, you know, kids went or go, that sort of thing.
I was hoping we would just be proactive because we knew this, just particularly that man was getting ready to retire, and let's hope that we were proactive and let's try to get, get those positions filled.
Yeah. And then, and then finally, so you can move on, the last two bullets are a little bit touchy, because as you know, you have to collectively bargain with your five employee groups, and so we never, we never like to sit here and just say, here's some figures on salary, because bargaining has begun. We were already at the table with some units and planning to be at the table soon with others. But those last two blueprint priorities and salaries, you could sort of blend those two things together. That would have to do with other forms of time, which cost staffing money, other forms of staffing that's coming under the blueprint, and then whatever transpires in the process of collective bargaining with all of the units. And back to your question, Ms. Sevigney, there's not a date stamp in the law that says, well, there is one. Next year, we have to have met the 10% increase over the prior four years on the teacher scale, so that's due, and that's part of those two bullets. But we, we have to then move immediately from there to a, to a minimum teacher salary of 60,000 by fiscal '27, I think. So by the end of June 2026, we'd have to have a contract to have that in place. And we have this year and one more year to agree to the required career ladder under the blueprint, which is sort of a salary scale slash organizational structure slash professional development plan all in, all in one. So, you know, Commissioner, to your earlier question, I think there's some things where you could say, here's the date in the law where it says we must do that, but then there's these other things that still have to be done, and it's all a sliding scale. So how much of it can we get done in time? And realistically, if we don't start on it, and it's a staffing question, how do we suddenly hire everybody we have to at the drop, at the go date? We, we can't do that, so we have to plan that in. We have to at least make an attempt to get there.
And I would just say that, you know, over the years, many of the districts around us have been able to move forward with some of the services and staffing that the blueprint is requiring, and they've been able to do that slowly over time. And so the blueprint doesn't have as much of an impact today as it does for us. And I think that's really the position we find ourselves in, is that we're really unable to cut the fat anywhere to, to bring it somewhere else, because over time- to bring it somewhere else because, over time, we really haven't added anything. In fact, we've cut for 15 years. And so it just puts us in a much more difficult position to be able to take the resources we have and be able to meet blueprint.
Yeah, they've been able to build a bench, and we don't. I mean, that's unfortunate.
Because the formula is what it is. They don't want to change it. She's been told that. And it's going to be a burden for everyone. And they call us a wealthy county, but this is going to take a toll on everybody.
Right, and that's the problem, is that the way the formula works, at least the way I understand it, is we're not really a wealthy county. We just don't have as much poverty, I think, as some other jurisdictions. But we also don't have the upper end to kind of balance it out. So we've got less at the lower end, but we've got a lot clumped in the middle. And towards the lower end of the middle, you know, we don't have that higher end or the industry, you know, the industrial component that other jurisdictions have to kind of make up for that, so.
And it's also, you have many families who don't qualify. You know, they may only make minimum wage, but they don't qualify for any extra assistance outside of that. There's a couple families I know that, you know, the mom's a single mom. And she's in that situation where she makes minimum wage, but she goes to apply for stuff. And they're like, well, you don't qualify because you make too much. You make $20 more a week than you should. So what does that tell a family? I mean, that kind of like tells that mom, like, well, I shouldn't try to do better for myself and my kids. You know, and that's unfortunate that this is what some families are dealing with. It's, it's an unfair situation for them, you know? Housing's expensive, rent, I see it all the time on social media. You know, parents are looking for a place to rent that's not $2,000 a month. That's something just comfortable, and it's impossible to find anything for them. So it's, it's a very hard situation sometimes in different parts of the county.
But John, I think you, in the way you kind of laid that out in terms of some of the blueprint requirements, right? Where, okay, this year, we got to get to the 10% overall over the period of time, right? And if we could understand how much that's worth. And then the next step to getting to the minimum salary, and then the career ladders after that. If we could at least just have some sort of idea of what is the glide path for how much additional that is every year, right? For each of those stepwise components, I think that would be.
It's huge. That's huge.
When we met with Mr. Zalewski, he challenged the superintendent to come up with a graphic to do that, and she's been working on that nonstop. So I'm not kidding. So I think when she presents in January, she may have something like that, and also.
I'd say they challenge him push-ups, but I think the superintendent wins, so.
We've also asked for time on your agenda to maybe do a brief overview as well.
I'm telling you, I think that would go a long ways. One, it would go a long ways for us, obviously, working together to get what the needs are, but also for the community to understand that this is not a light switch and that Carroll County does not have a bench, you know, like other larger jurisdictions. And how we can get from here to there, it's going to take a lot of hard work. And there's a lot of people with a lot of priorities, and they got to understand, let's rally, you know, the wagons or whatever. Circle the wagons around this because this is going to be a very heavy lift. But that glide path, I think that scenario will go a long ways, so.
And Ted said if we said these things and gave him credit, he would give us the $7 million.
Is that what he said?
Nice.
As Rob now moves forward to try to get us to some of the other points, these are the drivers that, but these are driving the expenditures and the budget that the superintendent's building to give you that big book, you know, the whole budget at your January meeting. So we appreciate all that conversation. That's been great. And if you have any other questions throughout, just come back to those because it's most important that we make sure all of your questions are answered here especially.
And I do want to circle back on the, some of the dual enrollment stuff with the pass-throughs because I had to actually pay my daughter's bill just a couple of weeks ago. And I had a couple of ah-ha's as I was looking over the bill and understanding how that's all going to work. So it might be something there that's worth a couple hundred thousand. And at this point, we're fighting for every couple hundred thousand that we can find. So just, we can talk about that offline, but have some thoughts there.
Sure.
Okay, so to kind of start to put the dollars to some of that conversation, I just want to sort of summarize the outlook for the revenue side. Again, the estimate on state revenues, the ask and request for county revenue support, a few other pieces that we'll touch on a little bit later, some identified fund balance use. We'll talk about some other possibilities after that. We're looking at about $26.5 million in total overall increase in the FY '24 budget. And this kind of puts the discussion we just had and the identified needs into some dollars to see how that $26.5 million applies across those various categories. Again, the inflationary impacts we discussed, the blueprint requirements that we outlined as already being required in fiscal year '24, the transportation cost, the inflation and the agreed-upon changes to the formulas there, the substitute rates, as we discussed, at 1.4 million, the staffing changes and the cost there. And then again, the blueprint future needs and priorities and the employee salary, the compensation, obviously, our largest cost and a big cost driver as we're in a, you know, upcoming, as we look to the future there. So that kind of puts where the dollars, you know, are looking to go, where the challenges are. So we mentioned items not included. Again, always more additional needs than there are resources to find that balance between what's needed and what we can build into our request. The additional bus contractor requests, that 600-some thousand is a bit of a high end. There's a range depending on hours there. So these would be dollars in addition to the prior agreements the board already agreed to and what's built in. So certainly, any questions there?
When we talk about career ladders, I don't know if other people know this, that every teacher that is nationally certified, that's an extra $10,000. Am I correct on that? And so that's a big jump. So that's another thing that we have to pay, that I think everyone in this room, plus everyone else, needs to know that too, that that's an extra $10,000. So I just want it out there.
Yeah, certainly the additional blueprint requirements, as we mentioned, how we're going to get from where we are to fully implemented. We believe additional teachers will be needed with the minimum planning time that'll be required. How do we phase that in and not leave ourselves with a significant jump the year that goes into effect? The teacher salary is mentioned as part of the larger compensation drivers within blueprint and the minimums that they're requiring. The career ladders, as was mentioned, yet to be created and negotiated, but a big driver of cost over the next several years. And then the additional pre-K, so we mentioned the finishing out our five classrooms. But then, as the blueprint continues to require for four-year-old and three-year-old and need-based, so that'll continue to be a driver as well. The idea of maintaining our infrastructure, of reinvesting in the technology and in the security systems and in the maintenance of our facilities, this is an item that we've been able to use fund balance from time to time, and we may be making some recommendation there. Ongoing funding for these needs is not included in the budget request. So we're, again, sort of addressing it as needed with one-time money when available. And then didn't list many other system requests. Certainly appreciate the input from our directors, our school administrators. Plenty of needs identified, plenty of other opportunities to meet challenging situations. For the most part, most of those budgets were held flat, sort of at baseline, and this request does not meet many of those needs.
Mr. Burke, can you, do you have a feel for how much the technology infrastructure is worth? I know that, you know, we were able to get all of our students up to, you know, one-to-one ratio given all of the federal dollars that were made available for that purpose, right? But now the maintenance and replacement costs of all of that are completely on us moving forward, which is another thing that had not been baked in to the amounts previously. And I appreciate your comments about us using one-time funds to cover it. But what kind of annual cost would you estimate for, you know, like sort of a reasonable replacement cost schedule for technology?
Yeah, I promise, Mr. Burke, that if anything historical came up, I would, I would assist. These are three areas that, as long as whoever the superintendent is lets me, I will always put up here, even though I'm losing hope. These are three areas that have never been appropriately funded in the operating budget. And not only that, we talked all about all the positions we reduced every time. We reduce money out of these categories. So we've never been, we've never been budgeted to fully fund the replacement cycle, even before we added the one-to-one ratio. So that's cyclical. It depends on when things are coming out of warranty. And don't just think about laptops, but think about network switches and hubs and all of those things too. So in a given year, one to three to four million? What we have asked in light of the one-to-one ratio is that, and how we've done that, just, I mean, so everyone knows and whoever might be watching, we deal with it at year-end. If we have savings in other categories, you do those year-end transfers, the commissioners approve them, and then we use capital money usually for the infrastructure kinds of things. And the county's been good about supporting the capital, the local capital project and technology especially. With the, with the one-to-one ratio sort of happening instantaneously, we're working, Mr. Burke's working with Mr. Davis, with Mr. Prokop because, and Mr. Pierce because of the security. There's, there's a lot of technology that goes with the security infrastructure to say, can we figure out a way to, to maybe a little more clearly define a plan over four or five years of what that would look like to try to replace it? So we're trying to build that out now. Security, if you go back to post Sandy Hook tragedy, Sandy Hook tragedy right afterwards, we, you know, we've added, we've added a lot there, and we need to. There was, there was never any funding to deal with the maintenance of that in the operational, ongoing way. And maintenance, over time, so not in one year, but over time, we cut $1.5 million out of Mr. Prokop's budget. We did it a little bit at a time, hoping he wouldn't notice, but it added up to 1.5 million. And that was, and that hurts though, because that's the money that Ray used to proactively address the, the maintenance needs at schools that you don't see in your CIP. They're not the high-level things, replacing an entire HVA system or replacing all the windows in a building, but just fixing all of the stuff that doesn't meet that level. So it goes back to Superintendent Guthrie. In his last year or the year before, we created the local project with the county's blessing. We created the local capital projects, and then you started populating that with year-end money when you could. That's how we've been approaching it, and that's great, and that's, I mean, that's our lifeline. Sort of the trade-off to that from having it in the operating budget is it, it doesn't, I want to say ties their hands, but it makes Ray and Gary and Curtis have to be very strategic about when and how they do things. You can't, if it's in your operating budget, you can just plan it well and move it forward. If it's in the capital budget, you have to think about, okay, how much does this cost? And what are all of our other priority needs? And how much money reasonably do we think we need to sort of cling to in that account to make sure we have what we need if something bad happens? Kind of, it sort of slows down how you might address some of those things in meaningful ways. It's been, I think it was Mr. Guthrie's last year superintendent since we last populated those accounts with some money from you. I think when Rob gets to fund balance, we're going to be talking about repeating that again at the close of this fiscal year.
Ms. Pataglia?
Can I just, so about the technology replacement cost stuff, though, you said it was three to four million dollar estimate on an annual basis before it was a one-to-one ratio?
Yes, and that had a lot to do with how many things were coming out of warranty in a given year or how many things would break in a given year. So, and, and student devices have a different warranty structure than, than maybe devices that aren't for students. And I can't remember all of those details at this moment, but we've been working to try to figure out what's the best way to sort of maybe address that in chunks? And what can we get by with? And you really can't, I mean, you could feel differently, and that's fine, but you really can't run the risk of those things going out of warranty because we don't have the capacity to fix all of those devices. So if they're in warranty, there might be a couple of rough days while you're waiting for the replacement, but at least it's getting replaced. If we let things get out of warranty and they're not supported, then that's a whole, you know, that's a whole different operational mode at that point.
Mr. Davis, is there anything that you wanted to add to that?
Good afternoon. I'm quickly, just a couple of points. The point that John was making, did very well about like the security and being thoughtful, there are cascading effects. So one of the things that we're doing with surveillance is we're replacing cameras. They're better cameras. They have higher resolution, which is great. But higher resolution means more data. It's more information. So that means there's network impacts, the amount of data that's flying over the wireless. There's impacts on the storage of the videos that are being, you know, retained. So it's, you know, so you can look at it as we're doing surveillance, we're upgrading the cameras, but there's all these other things that need to be upgraded as well. So that's, that's one point, and that's, just add a little bit of texture to Mr. Neal's point about the, you know, the, being very thoughtful about, you know, when to do those things. As far as the technology replacement cycle, it has been very variable. And one of the reasons is because we historically had a five-year replacement cycle for technology, and it's not always equal each year what comes out. So, you know, what's ready to be replaced. So there is some variability there. We have been working on an analysis of what it's going to cost. We were going to, we were actually ready to share that earlier in the year, but we wanted to wait and do a further analysis on breakage and some other costs to get a better, a more full picture of what we're really looking at. So because of that, we're hopeful to have something to share in January. However, I can tell you that it's basically, if we were looking at an inventory of approximately 18,000 computers, and then we went to one-to-one, well, that's 26,000, and plus we have to have extras for, for, you know, spares because kids forget their laptops or they, you know, they're broken and they have to have loaners. So, but we were able to reduce some of the student computers in the schools, but not all of them because there are some programs that require specific types of computers. For all intents and purposes, we're looking at about 36,000 just computers. And that's none of the other stuff that we deal with. So you're really looking at at least doubling the cost. And if I, if I looked at historical cost of what the replacement cycle and kind of averaged it out, it's probably about 2.3 million a year, and that's just for the end-user equipment. That's none of the network and the other things that Mr. Neal was referring to. So it's going to be easily 5 million a year. The student laptops cost less, but as Mr. Neal alluded to, the warranty structures are different. You can only get a three-year warranty on student laptops because of the nature of, you know, you can imagine. And there are other costs that we have to compute into that also. We have some things with breakage. Unfortunately, in today's society, as you know, sometimes it's cheaper to just buy something new than repair it. And so you have to make that decision, particularly when it's no longer under warranty. It's not worth it to repair it. By the time you pay for the parts and the labor, it's cheaper to just, you know, replace it. So we're trying to build into all those factors so we have a good feel for exactly what the impacts will, that will be. We historically, over the years, had done a lot with the operating budget and year-end for some of our capital. But the county has done a great job of funding a specific amount for technology improvement. So we're in much better shape as far as that's concerned to address some of the more, you know, the backend type things related to technology. But that's just to give you a ballpark figure, but we're trying to really kind of nail it down a little bit more, but. down a little bit more, but.
The ballpark was fine, I just wanted to have an idea of what we were talking about. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pataglia, you're next, and then followed by Dr. Dorsey.
I appreciate Mr. Davis talking about the, the cameras and security and stuff, because that was one thing I was going to bring up, is, you know, Mr. Pierce had said, you know, in the Security Council meeting we had, a lot of those are going outdated, they need to be updated, replaced, even some more put in place where they, they should be. And even our doors, you know, making sure our doors are working properly all the time. So those things are extremely important as far as security, and that, again, rolls into technology, rolls into the maintenance. So those things are extremely important to make sure that our schools are safe, you know, whether it's by the doors, by the windows, and also technology-wise. So, I mean, one, I think, was it Baltimore County had a cyber attack last year, two years ago?
A couple of years ago, yep.
You know, I mean, that's all it takes, and then that could even cost more money. So I think it's really important that we do concentrate on that, too, and making sure our systems are safe. So I appreciate that.
Dr. Dorsey.
Well, I was just going to comment as well. I mean, hearing the interrelatedness with technology, security, and maintenance, I certainly get that. But I think there's no price tag that we can put on the security piece of it. And here, we're looking at it as something, you know, that really isn't included, something that we use end-of-year funds for. I mean, we all need to make sure that we are prioritizing the security in the, in the schools. And I know there are a lot of, um, other situations that we're dealing with, but security is certainly top in my mind. And I know we'll later get to the point where maybe we can talk about prioritizing some things, but, you know, in my thinking, we, we don't need to have security as an add-on.
Mr. Whistler.
Thank you again. I appreciate the information about the tech refresh. That was actually one of my questions. Thanks for answering that. But I'd like to go back, if I can, and talk about the teacher salary portion. Do those salary, do the figures for that, do they include the pension costs and the actuarial considerations for the pensions?
Yes, we generally include all the benefit packages around, around salary changes as well.
The concern I have is that, you know, now that the stock market has really been low, and we've had a lot of people retire over the last couple of years, and, you know, in particular, are there any kind of variables or considerations for shortfalls in our pension contributions? I just don't want to see us hit with, you know, oh, my gosh, we have to come up with one or two million more because of, because of increased retirements and, you know, the need to cash in more pensions at a lower stock market price.
Well, they sort of hit us with that last year.
Right.
Made an adjustment to their actuarial rate of return assumption. That was a surprise to us last year, something we picked up. Hopefully, those things are, are intended to be long-term, you know, to, to be able to ride through the ups and downs of the stock market. So we don't have any additional information of any change for this year at this time, and not projecting any.
But that is a variable that could, that could catch us off-guard. That's just my concern.
Over time. It's, it's not short-term, but over time, it can.
It, it can. So, good question. So your employees are in one of two state pension systems, either the teacher system, which isn't only for teachers, there are other positions in that, or the employee system. Both are contributory, meaning the employees contribute a portion of their salary themselves, but then the Board of Ed pays a different amount depending on those systems. So for the teacher system, you, more or less, you pay half. There, it's a little more than, there's a formula and some, some, some background to it, but you pay half of the employer's contribution for folks in the teacher system, and 100% for people in the, in the employee system. And so when you see us cost that, when we build the budget, we, we, we have to build around an average for a position. And so you would see this year, for '24, we would budget a teaching position at $85,000. Now, teachers don't put 85,000 in, well, most teachers don't put, on average, 85,000 in their pocket, but that's Social Security, FICA, our portion of pension, healthcare, the, the board's cost of healthcare, et cetera. So you'll, you'll see all of that baked into how we budget. For some positions, you might say, well, why, why does a project manager cost that much, but a school psychologist costs this much? Well, and that, that's a pretty good example, actually. You're paying 100% of, of employer's pension on a project manager and half on a, on a school psychologist. So there's, there's factors like that. I, I would say in fairness to them, you know, Mr. Burke's right, we're sort of at the mercy of the actuaries at the state, but other than the year where they legislatively shifted half of the, of the teachers' cost to the boards, it's been rare that we get that mid-year surprise like we did last year. Most years, we don't get that, that kind of a mid-year surprise. So we've, we would factor that overall into the inflationary figure along with healthcare.
And then one more thing. There is no rainy day fund or some sort of set aside funding for emergencies set aside in this budget. Is there, is there anything set aside for the, some, some crazy emergency popping up?
So that's your fund balance, and Rob's going to talk about that in a bit. We don't have like a reserve for contingency line item in the operating budgets or in any other categories.
It's not significant.
We, we deal with it with your fund balance. I, I'll, I'll reserve that for him, because he actually discusses the policy when we get there and that sort of thing.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I will bring up one thing, that since you've all talked about benefits, me being a teacher and Dr. Dorsey, that is one draw to Carroll County, is that we do have really good health benefits versus some of the other counties, and we might not make as high a salary as some areas, but we do have really good benefits. So that's, that's a, that's a give and take on this whole total budget, that people need to, you know, be reminded that, that is one of the reasons why people, why educators stay in the system, because of the benefits. So I just, you know, I want everyone to know that, 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 that's a big draw.
And when you go back to that vacancy list, when Mr. Diaz is at those job fairs, he'll be, he'll be selling that to every potential custodian.
Well, of course, yes. And that is, that is a good sell. And also, the, our, our children and their discipline and their behavior in classrooms, but that is a perk, is our extra, some of our benefits that keep people around. So I just, you know, want to say that, because I love Carroll County.
Okay, move on to other discussion items, things that sort of help shape where we're headed. The blueprint restrictions were mentioned. This was certainly the big topic of the joint meeting with the delegation recently, as we're continuing to understand the nature of the restrictions that the blueprint puts on, the accountability for reporting, the shares, the state and local shares of each expenditure that we're spending funds within program areas. You'll recall the example of the compensatory ed, the comp ed, that we did at that joint meeting, an, an area where it's, it's going to be dictating additional dollars spent in certain areas. The other being the spending at the school level of 75%. You know, this will have us making sure that we're allocating direct costs to the school, and we're, we're continuing to monitor that. But those two pieces, you know, even to the extent that there's new dollars, those two pieces are really restrictive in that they determine where and how it needs to be spent. A component of demonstrating equity in the use of our funds at the school level, so we'll be looking at the impact of that, potentially reallocating resources based on relative need, and that will impact the resources across the system. A little, a little different level of looking at the budget than we have, have historically. So this budget, as we're looking at it now, the FY '24 budget plan, does not include all of the impacts of these restrictive blueprint resources. And, you know, it's, it's, again, we're meeting the requirements that are, that are hitting now, but how do we get from here to there? What are the impact? How will they phase in over time? What's the impact of waiting to do it the year in which it becomes effective, and how impactful that will be? So these are difficult challenges, and...
Yeah. So we made such a big deal out of this at the delegation meeting, because it's a huge deal. This, the budget plan in front of you earlier is not built around this, and that's, that's purposeful and also sort of by default. So we spent a lot of time talking with the superintendent, saying, we think we're getting a much clearer picture on this, we think what it means is kind of what we talked about, and, but, but this, this is a major change to our community schools in terms of allocation of resources. And while all of us, I think, would say, I know the superintendent said this to me, it would be my preference to not have to do it all in one year. To, you know, to do it incrementally without a meaningful plan, I, I'm not sure that that's better either, and that's kind of where we landed with the superintendent. So what we're doing is, is trying to further our understanding, get more clarity from the state. We've begun internal processes. We even brought in a representative group of principals not that long ago, and I'm sure they would tell you it was the best half-day they've spent in a while, kind of getting further down than we were at that delegation meeting, like, what, what would this mean for your schools, or schools at your level? We had principals from every level, and they got it pretty quickly, because they deal with staffing every, you know, every day. It's challenging, and it's what we've been talking to Mr. Zaleski about a lot, because when it comes, it's going to profoundly change how our schools are operating. It's going to, it's going to also raise unintended, I think, consequences that the framers of the blueprint didn't really think about, because as we understand it, you're going to take resources from here and put them here, and for great philosophical reasons. But again, there's not also, there's not necessarily the space in that school to put those people and have, and have them teach or provide service to students. So all of those things, we're trying to get a, a better handle on and develop some more meaningful way to approach it. But if the state should say, you'll, you'll do it all in '25, fiscal '25, because that's what we require, then that's what we'll all be confronted with. And what I keep saying to Ted is, and somebody will, people will find someone to blame, and he and I are going to flip a coin. Because it's, I mean, we're making a little bit of a joke, but it, this is, we, I think you got it. You know, this is, this is, this is, I don't want to use the wrong analogy, this is the thing looming out there that is not in this budget plan, that's going to, to come home.
I think, I think we're going to have a large community reaction when resources and staff are taken from one school and given to another school, so that one school's class sizes can be significantly smaller than another school's. And that's exactly what Blueprint intends. It intends for us to give equitable resources to schools, not necessarily equal resources to schools. And we've always staffed our schools in an more, in more of an equal manner. And so I, I, I think John's word of looming is a, is a correct word, and, and our, our communities and our staff, I think, are going to struggle ve- very much with this.
Ms. Pataglia.
I like the point you made about that, that we're going to see, you know, and hear from our communities about this, because we're, we potentially could also start seeing scores going down for schools that have been high-performing. You know, and, and I understand, we, we do want our, all our schools to be, you know, performing very well, and we don't have any low-performing schools in the county, it's what, one of the funding things. We don't have any low-performing, but we could have a school very well that does exceptional, and literally, their numbers could crash. And that's not fair. It's not fair to the residents of this county, and that's, that's the disappointment of, of the blueprint on this.
So as you pick up the budget from the superintendent between January and February, if you would want to change this and say, we, we do want you to take a step forward, I, I guess what we would say, what we're trying to say is, we didn't take a pass on this simply because we didn't want to. We'd rather try to do it as best as we can and as well as we can, and build some understanding in the community, and get a lot more input from stakeholders than what, where we've been so far. But if you wanted to say, we, we kind of know in general where this is headed, so move forward, it, it wouldn't necessar, I mean, we'll always take more revenue, but it would be more about realigning resources. So it would be more about changing the categorical totals than it, maybe, than it would be about, you know, adding things to the screen, so to speak. It would be, it would be about shifting, you know, within category two, which is the instructional category, money going from this school to this school, that sort of thing, than it would necessarily be about restructuring the budget. So as much as we talked about the blueprint, the blueprint formula for funding, which is the new law, and we had the, the formula on the screen, they also didn't change the part of the state law that requires us to report by the major category. So the way you've always seen and approved your budget still exists, so there's these two things that don't perfectly line up, that we have to work within. This would be more about moving money within those categories, I think, than about necessarily increasing money. And going back to the delegation conversation, why we wanted to have that and, and start, start to build that conversation county-wide, the only trade-off, as far as we could see, would be to offset that locally. So if you have to move, you know, just for the sake of anything, 25 teachers from somewhere today to other schools where they, you know, where they aren't today, those class sizes go up, unless you could locally fund teachers to offset that, that change at, at the schools that are sending, sending the FTE or sending the teachers, if that makes any sense. Okay, so I sense enough of that.
So many things I could say, but I'll just hold back.
Okay, we briefly mentioned the fund balance. Want to give a, a little update where we are. So at the end of our fiscal year '22, June 30th, a snapshot of our fund balance, 12.8 million. That's about 3.4% of our budget. We do operate under a board policy for fund balance reserve. It, it sort of keeps us in the, between minimum and maximum there, between 1% and 5%, so you see the dollars that would represent that. So I would say healthy fund balance at year-end, fiscal year '22, maybe an opportunity to look at addressing some challenges with some one, some one-time money if we, I want to take advantage of that opportunity. So we've identified a few areas. The first two are included in the budget as we presented it there, the transportation, fuel increase, and admin. So this is identified some of the top-end potential estimate of where fuel could be in fiscal year '24, and identified that as one-time, as we would project that either it would be, you know, not, not permanently ongoing at that price and come back down, so one-time use would be appropriate, or at a minimum that it sort of smoothed the transition into a different, you know, level of fuel costs that we might have going forward. And then the special ed case manager is the second year of an MOU that was implemented by the board, and so this finishes that out. So that, those two together is about $1 million in fund balance already identified. And then, as we talked about, the potential for infrastructure investment in security and technology and maintenance, we can continue to review and, and discuss and see what we might want to include. To the extent that we use fund balance to do some of these items, it's really no net impact on the budget at that point. It's a use of one-time, it would be covered with fund balance revenue at that time. So I think we will continue to monitor that, have additional discussion, bring some additional recommendations later in our, in our year as we head toward final... recommendations later in our, in our year as we head toward finalizing the budget with some other potential uses there.
Ms. Sevigny.
Mr. Burke, so one of these additional sheets that you had provided says, you know, where we've got some vacancies currently, those, that, that situation should inherently add to the fund balance at the end of the year, right? Because for some portion of the year, these positions have been vacant.
In, in historical times, that would almost always be true. It's, it's sort of a little bit of a different scenario right now because we, we talked all about how those vacancies are one major component of the moving parts of class coverage. We're also paying, when I said, schools have to do a series of things like have teachers cover other, for other teachers during that teacher's plane, we're paying for that. And when we pull the assistants to, to, to be the teacher for the day, there's a premium we pay the assistant to do that and all of that dringles everywhere. So not as much maybe as in historical times, if you had a series of vacancies, it might generate sort of savings, certainly some, but, but maybe not as much as in a, in a typical year or a more traditional year.
And I would see, because the, the 12.8 million that we had as of 2022, that was after having used a fair bit of fund balance in various ways.
Correct.
Last year, this current year, right? So I, I guess I was wondering whether that was going to start, you know, getting close to tapping out at the 18.6 million maximum that we're allowed to have? Or if you expect fund balance to remain kind of stable? I guess where are we projecting fund balance to be at the end of this year with what we know today?
Yeah, we haven't done that yet. It's a little early in the year. We'll be getting, looking at that sort of after the first of the year as we have a better handle on where we are halfway through the year. So, and then keeping an eye on that though, and planning for some use is where we're talking about identifying some opportunities, certainly in the, in the maintenance side of things to, to use some. So we don't, you know, we want to identify needs, you know, not create them, but identify what's out there and that's appropriate for a one-time use. And I think we'll, we'll be able to do that through this process.
And, and now that I've more fully understand your question, I reduced it just to sort of money generated from vacancies. Legally, we can overspend your budget, so there's always some money left that, you know, that would, that would transfer to fund balance next year. So we, it will go up. It's just a matter of that analysis and, and that plus it's been, I think, five fiscal years since we populated those three project accounts. We, we do think it's time to go. And we spent, you know, we have strategically, but we've spent. And you do have, your, your fund balance as a whole is your only reserve, even within the money we've moved from fund balance to say those capital projects. We still have things that weren't planned, like if you remember the Westminster High building facade, that was an unanticipated, in my memory, about a $1 million.
Yeah, it started out not at 1 million.
That came out of that account. So it's, we think for a lot of reasons, it's time to go back somewhere in the course of this budget season and, and move some money there that, that would be a good use.
So Mr. Whistler, that was a very good example of rainy day because they started at one spot and when they finished, it grew. It grew and grew until, but it, it's all done now. But that's, that's how that works for us.
Yeah, well, you know, just in lieu of things coming down, you know, the looming is right, the word he used, you know, whether it might be appropriate to look at expanding that fund balance from the 1 to 5%, maybe even higher. That's just something we, we might want to have internally as a discussion.
So that's your policy, but it's also, you have a fund balance and so does the college, the community college and the library system based on an existing memorandum of understanding with commissioners. And so that, that limit of 5% is set in that MOU as well.
Ms. Pataglia.
And I just wanted to clarify something because I think something the public might question too. So all these vacancies, these are already salary-wise in the budget, correct? So these aren't just new positions we're looking for, because I think that was something that happened last year with some of the commissioners. We're asking like, what's, you want all these positions, but these are not additional positions. These are positions already budgeted in our budget that we need to fill. And the only additional ones we're looking for is the two career and technology center custodial staff, correct?
Yeah, the positions. So the, the new ones would be, the, the, all right, let me, so the new ones would be the custodians and the project manager. They presently don't exist. The seven fund balance positions, those human beings are in those jobs.
Okay.
You, you, you made a str- and you, historically, the board has been very, very cautious and appropriately so to not use fund balance for things that cost money ongoing. You made a strategic decision to forward fund for three fiscal years, those positions. And my goodness, you were, you were prophetic because for the first two, Mr. Pierce's, Mr. Elliott and Ms. Gomes', Assistant in Health Services, you didn't know a pandemic was coming. But if you hadn't made that decision, I'm not quite sure how well that would have, it went better because of those, those two folks. And then schools like, we talk about mental health needs all the time here. That was one thing that the board actually added to that discussion from the superintendent at that time. And, and technology, Mr. Davis, if he came back, would tell you that we're, we're some amazing number below the recommended industry standards for supporting technology. And that was before we added all of the one-to-one devices. So that's just a small little attempt to get at, at the needs to support our folks as they try to use this technology. And again, that was, that was also a stroke of genius because a pandemic came and we handed out lots and lots of laptops. So four more folks to help doesn't hurt.
But this was, this was necessary.
Yeah.
So, and I'm glad we fought ahead, but.
Yeah, every, every one of those positions was necessary and got us through COVID and we still need them. It's, yeah.
It's, it's not extras that we needed every, each and every one of them.
Well, like I said, I think, I think it's good that the, the community knows, you know, in the event it's reported, like these are already in the budget. So we're not going out and we're not saying we want 12 custodial on top of what we have. This is a vacant, you know? So I, I want to just make sure because we do know sometimes things get lost in the sauce. People don't have a clear understanding. So I just wanted to make sure that statement was put out there.
And we may well get, great point, yes. And we may well get a request for information from a citizen or the press, but these, these numbers are fluid. This is static till this morning. It wouldn't be these numbers right now and it'll be different. And so I've, I've watched closely with Mr. Diaz over time. This is probably somewhere near an average, but I've seen months where we've had well more custodians than this. And, you know, early in the year, food service was a huge challenge. Ms. Sarno's been able to make some, some headway there. SSAs are student support assistance. That's been pretty consistent somewhere around that number all year long. So that's been a constant struggle. So these are a snapshot, but they're fairly accurate for where we've been for the last couple of years.
And I think that's a good point too, because I know sometimes I get a message from different community members, like, you know, oh, you have all these vacancies, you have people leaving. But this is, this is what's considered normal for our school system is, you know, you have people that come and go, always looking for new jobs. We're always looking for people to replace those jobs. So it's not like this is anything new, that this is something that's kind of happens all the time.
There's always, there's always attrition and, and turnover. This has become, this is higher than historical. So this has sort of been somewhere near the standard since the pandemic.
Okay.
And this is what we're trying to recover from and, and get back to a place where we would hopefully have fewer vacancies than we have now.
Okay.
I did want to, I just, sorry, I wanted to answer Dr. Dorsey from earlier because I don't want you to go home thinking I don't prioritize security. We, we, we don't hesitate.
But again, I, I think it's something we need to certainly make sure that we all keep in mind, that we do want that to be.
Sure. Mr. Pierce presented at that work session about the, the assessment tool and how it's automated now and it generates work orders. We don't hesitate to fix a, a security priority. Mr. Prokop might have to wait on some windows or something else, but we, we, we do address them. So when I talked about it, it's always better to have it in your operating budget to, to act more quickly. That doesn't apply to those immediate security needs. We're fixing that window within 24 hours. We're trying to get that lock fixed as soon as we can get parts. If, if anything's delaying us right now, sometimes it's lead time on, on components and parts. But those, those things move forward and we'll figure that out financially. Ray has to wait.
But I think it makes the point that even the things, even the priorities that we're holding off on are significant and vital priorities. It isn't, it isn't anything that we can't, we have to provide for that in the future. It can't be put off forever.
I did have one quick question. This is actually going back a couple of pages, but just, just from my understanding, on page six, you had said that you were splitting out transportation from the inflationary impacts. But the, the 2.1 million, how much of that is inflationary versus?
I would say, yeah, so historically, we, we probably wouldn't have had transportation as its own sub-bullet. It would have just been inflation.
It would have just been within inflationary, right?
Yeah, but because we made the changes last year and it's been discussed, we, we broke it out and it is a big number. I would say, Ms. Sevigny, everything except, well, we did two things. Everything except $120,000, that's the part that we, that's the tweak we've made to the existing formula to lower the fuel divisor to try to offer some remuneration for the diesel fuel additive.
Okay.
And then we tried to, you know, Rob just spent some time explaining that. We, diesel fuel, you know, putting the diesel fuel on the buses is the one major variable in Mr. Hardesty's budget and it's been volatile. So that, you know, the numbers have been way higher than they have been and way higher than where we've budgeted even the last couple of years. So Rob and Mr. Burke and, and Mr. Sexton and his budget office worked with Mr. Hardesty to say, let's, let's maybe hope and assume that, that that's not where the number's going to permanently land per gallon for diesel. So let's use a little fund balance to, to not build the total amount into the operating budget and see where the market brings us by the close of this fiscal year. And if it's too high, you get, by your policy, you go to your fund balance to, to cover an overage. But if it, but if it settles lower than where it is right now, you haven't, you haven't built that into the base operating budget because you're, you're offsetting a little bit of that with fund balance.
Gotcha. Okay, so all but the 120K that we talked about is, is inflation of that 2.1 million, but it's mostly driven by the diesel fuel component, which we potentially have an idea for, so that we might actually be able to reduce that a little bit.
It's fuel, it's, we, we increased the per mile payment for the, the maintenance per mile by CPI from the prior year. That was like 11.4 or 11.7%. So in one year, we had sort of a cumulative 10-year CPI all, or I don't know, six, seven year CPI all at once. The price of buses went, of a new bus went up, I, I want to say about $7,000 or $8,000 per bus. That's in the per vehicle, per vehicle allotment. And part of the PVA or the per vehicle allotment is sort of like how we pay the capitalized cost of the bus. That's what the PVA, some of that's driven by the prime interest rate and that also jumped a percentage in a quarter, I think, in that timeline. So it's all those factors together drive it forward.
Gotcha. So it's all those pieces that add up to the full inflationary portion of the, I guess it would be 2.0 million when you take out the 120.
Correct.
But, but, so diesel is a portion of that, that we potentially could lower our assumption for the cost of diesel. And then if there is an overage for the one year, that we could.
Correct.
Use fund balance to cover part of that.
You remember, so as we were building this, diesel was above six, I think, six a gallon.
It's less than five now. It's, I think I paid $4.79 today for diesel.
And we budgeted at four? Do you remember what we budgeted at, Mike? In the ongoing budget? I think we went to four. We went, I think we went to four.
Went to four, okay.
Well, maybe Mike can save me.
I thought the final figure was $4.75.
$4.75, so we went below five, right?
You're spot on, very close to it today, or something like that.
Thank our budget folks for that.
Yeah, or $4.69, I think.
I had $6 in my budget.
Oh, well, yeah. I under- yes, I understand that.
Okay.
It's awful.
So I wouldn't recommend that approach of potentially using, you know, reducing our assumption and potentially covering it at fund balance if we think long-term it's going to stay at $4.75 or higher. But if we think that that's a peak and it might come back off of that, then, you know, that's something that we might be able to play with.
That was our hope, that it might settle at $4.50 or somewhere like that. And if you have nine or 10 months, then you could say, okay, as we build FY '25, we feel better about that. Whereas if we put six in at that moment in time, we're, we're sort of working from six going forward. And it, it's, I mean, in the grand scheme of our budget, I don't know how much it changes things, but that's one less thing the superintendent could do otherwise. So, so we kind of approached it like that. And the other thing I missed is driver salary. So that, that in the plan in front of you, based on the report, that's 3%. We, we, the committee recommendation was a minimum of three. The additional request that was 607 on the screen, 607,000, that included a request from the Contractors Association for an additional 4% or a total of seven in one year. So that's also a driver of that 2.2 million, right? You're back to next step. Rob's trying to get to next step.
Next steps.
Good discussion. So just sort of the process from here out, as superintendent mentioned, she'll be bringing the proposed budget to the January board meeting on January 11th. We'll be publishing the budget book, the FY '24 operating budget public hearing slated for January 18th at 7:00 PM. And then an additional one on February 1st at 6:00 PM to be followed by a board work session. So if we hold, hold to that schedule, that'll be the time to really give feedback and change and be able to make any changes before we bring it back to the board's February 8th meeting for adoption that, and then we forward to the county our, our adopted budget then. Between then, we'll get the governor's proposed budget release January 20th. We think that'll give us some additional indication as to where we stand on state revenue and if there's any significant movement, we'll be able to adjust from that.
Any other comments? Ms. Sevigny?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of talk about, so the 13.4 million. Ms. McCabe, that, that's what we're saying, that, that's what you expect the January budget proposed request that you give to us.
Correct.
Is supposed to be 13.4 from the county. And that is meant to cover everything that's on the preliminary expenditures page, page four.
Correct, correct.
But nothing else.
No.
Right? So we need to be able to provide you guidance at the January meeting, whether we agree with the 13.4, if there's anything from the items not included list that we want to include in that to then send over to the commissioners.
Yes, that's correct.
And, and one of the things I would really like to recommend is, I don't think we have our next quarterly commissioner meeting set up. And I think it's very important to have one of those by the end of January at the latest.
I'm not sure. Do you know, Ms. Lucido, is it here or there?
It'll be there.
There, yeah, because we know they are so important, so.
No, I.
We'll be hearing from you then.
I, I agree with you. And I was thinking also, mid, late January, we have Mako, early January, State of the County is January 10th. So say the following week to two weeks, so like 17, 24, somewhere third, fourth week, I think would be appropriate.
Yes, we, we need to, I really appreciate that because we definitely need to continue that because we, as a board, we have always wanted these quarterly meetings. So thank you. So we'll be waiting to hear from you. Okay? Anything else? First of all, I want to thank everyone here, everyone back there. You've all worked really hard on these budgets and I really thank you, but not just the budget. You all are working hard all through the year to make Carroll County the best it can be. So, and I wish everyone a happy holiday and let's see what the weather brings, Mr. Hardesty. They might be putting in a little more time than us. So thank you so much and we'll join the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry.